Where's the other one?
Well, the computer.
Yeah, that's pretty nice.
These two really haven't changed.
Right there. Did you make these wider?
No, he didn't, I don't think.
Just covered it one?
Yeah, just covered it. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Planning Board meeting on July 25th, 2018. Please be aware that the meeting is going to be audio and video recorded for the record and for people at home. So our first order of business tonight is 14 Sharon Avenue, Norfolk Police Headquarters. Do we have anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah.
The Facility Police Director, Matt Haffner, he's downstairs right now.
Yeah, yeah.
With the advisory board.
Okay.
He said that he would be up right after that.
So we'll postpone this until he arrives. All right, the next item is 7 Hill Street Stormwater Management Permit. I believe we have it here.
We wanted to waive this. Am I assuming that this is a bylaw that wasn't waivable?
Correct, this is a general stormwater bylaw. So we'll have to... It's not technically 7:10 yet, but...
Yeah, well, let's see, you're right.
But I could give you, you know...
Give us an overview of this while we wait for 7:10 to arrive.
All right. Overview of this or something else?
This, this guy here.
What is...
We're gonna vote on.
Oh, okay. The, as you recall, the planning board approved the site plan special permit for 7 Hill Street at the last planning board meeting. And at that time, the stormwater system was reviewed by Beta Engineering.
Yeah.
And it complied with all the requirements of the stormwater management bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
And also, as well as the site plan bylaw and rules and regulations. However, we didn't advertise the public hearing for the stormwater management permit under the general bylaw. So tonight really is just administrative to catch up the stormwater management permit with what the board approved at the last meeting. Normally, we would make sure they're simultaneously done.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, so it's a catch-up, right?
Yes.
All right. Close enough to 7:10. Would you be so kind as to fill in for our absent?
I don't know if I remember how to do this.
Well, I'm sure you'll be refreshed.
All right. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass GL Section 40A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, Section F-11, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, July 25th, 2018, at 7:10 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, regarding a stormwater management permit for property located at 7 Hill Street in Norfolk, Mass. Have to read the whole thing? Never seen two paragraphs before.
Um...
You can waive the reading of the rest if you like.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, we can waive the reading of the rest.
You do. Need a motion to do that.
Yeah, we do. Now, the stormwater management permit is available to us. They'll have a copy of it. Anybody have any questions on the board? We've been through this before.
Yep.
This is just a repeat of the stormwater?
Yeah.
That we approved during the special permit, correct?
Yeah, the special permit site.
Same criteria, same everything?
Correct.
All right.
So someone make a motion to approve this?
Well, do a public hearing first.
All right, okay. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Anyone in the audience who would care to comment on this stormwater special permit for 7 Hill Street? All right, thank you. Any further questions on the board? Bill, you all right? Okay. Rich, you okay?
Yes.
All right, now.
Motion to close the public hearing for 7 Hill Street Stormwater Management Permit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye. Aye. It is a vote. Now we need to have a motion to approve the special permit.
Motion to approve the special permit for stormwater management, 7 Hill Street, Norfolk, Mass.
Do we have a second? We do have a second, all right? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Give us an unanimous vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have the plans for endorsement later.
Yeah.
The appeal period expired, no appeals were taken.
Okay. Okay, good.
Couple minutes before Cranberry Heights, so...
Yeah, we have a couple of minutes. Bessie, did you get any feedback from Aaron on the June 27th minutes?
I did not. John reviewed them.
I sent my comments to Aaron, so...
Okay, I didn't hear anything about him.
Okay, all right. Then we probably can't move on these until we get his input. We have a few minutes. You want to move ahead and do the Fox Run subdivision update while we're waiting?
Sure, yeah. On July 19th, myself, Bob McGee, DPW Superintendent, John Engdahl from Pulte Homes, we did a site walk and went through, created a punch list. Let me just pause one moment, actually. So the drainage improvement work that was part of the board's review as far as getting the stormwater drains had been done, was observed by Beta Engineering. They were onsite inspecting the work that was done. And we're just waiting on the TV. They TV'd the line.
You guys TV'd the line?
The Pulte Home TV'd the line, so we're just waiting to get, they're waiting to get the TV.
Yeah.
What did they find the main issue was when they dug up that section of pipe?
So there was, it was hard to determine, but the best guess is that the section that required the replacement was an area of high ledge.
Was it bedded in sand?
So, no. It was bedded in the backfill that was consistent with the rest of the trench. But I don't think they excavated far enough down. So Pulte put, Emerald put in Class 5 pipe, and as they did that, they excavated another six to eight inches of ledge out and then backfilled.
So basically, it should be about a foot of bedded sand before the pipe goes on, correct?
It was about six to eight inches.
All right, so they didn't put the foot and they didn't put sand? They just put crushed ledge?
I, it was difficult to, you know, when you're excavating a pipe, you know, it's all fallen in afterwards, so it was, you know, not that easy to guesstimate depth. But like I said, they did excavate additional ledge, about six to eight inches typically in some areas.
They took out an additional six to eight inches?
Right.
Okay.
Because the Class 5 pipe is actually thicker than the Class 3 pipe or Class 4. And then also, they added the additional...
Sure. Could you tell, before they took that six to eight inches out, could you tell how much depth it was below the pipe with either crushed stone or sand or whatever?
No.
You can tell, okay.
So they were put back in with 12 inches below the pipe and above the pipe with a sand-like material?
Close to it, yes.
All right.
So by the time they got to the pipe?
They brought in all, they excavated everything, and then they brought in all-new bedding and backfills.
Okay.
So you never saw the pipe intact? You dig down to the pipe, you probably destroyed the part that isn't. So when you saw the pipe connections, it's just debris in between them?
Right, right.
Okay.
So it was, you know...
Okay. So at the walkthrough on the 19th of July, we discussed bringing the project to completion. And estimated they're looking to do September of this year to do the final paving. They gotta go back in. You know, there's a bunch of, some shim work that needs to be done along the curb edges. They gotta repair some of the other curbing. They've gotta finish planting out the roundabouts there. They gotta re-point some joints. There's some sink holes by a foam box. They gotta go back in. And I gave them a list of some of the issues that were presented from some of the residents in relation to some of the grass strips and the work. So they're gonna go back in, they're gonna have to do some repair work there. And September's probably a pretty decent time because if you're gonna go back in and do some loaming and seeding, at least the weather should be a little bit better to have the grass taken. Not doing it at this time of year, which the downside of that is it gets into the school year, so there'll be a little bit of disruption that's associated with that, doing the final work, but it's probably a better time to finish up some of that work. I did meet with the residents at 110 Warren Street with the retaining wall that's there as a kind of a temporary measure to hold the bank back from that beech tree. There's a large, beautiful beech tree there, and then the cherry tree. And what we discussed is, and at that time, we had John Engdahl from Pulte Homes, we had Craig Johnson and Kimberly Beeline there as well. We met onsite, discussed it, and putting together essentially like a memo of understanding of what the scope of the work was done, because that was after the approval. So was, a lot of that, what was discussed wasn't part of the planning board approval at the time. That was kind of a field decision that was made. But to extend the stone retaining wall, you know, the dry, you don't see the grounding in it, and then step the grade back as it gets sort of their property to meet the three-to-one slope on the backside. We talked about, they're gonna, so Pulte will loam it, and then they'll decide, the homeowners, how they want to plant it. Either wanna grass it or put some other plantings here to hold the bed in place. Because right now, the banks is held, it's, it looks, aesthetically, it's not the greatest looking, but it's a good, it's a highway mix, so it's more like a meadow. There are some weeds in it, so it's not the prettiest per se, but part of the bank is stabilized with a highway mix. It's typical of what you do when you have a steeper slope. But so we discussed, you know, if you want to have something that looks a little bit nicer, then you could do it, and that's fine. We'll put it in the memo of understanding, but you gotta maintain it.
Yeah.
And so that was acceptable to them. So I'm working on the terms of that, and what I like to do is present it to the board, just incorporate it into the record, so that way, you know, Pulte knows what's gotta be done and vice versa, so there's no misunderstanding what needs to be done to finish this out to resolve this particular issue. So we're working on that. I think it seems like we're working on a good resolution on their, the stone wall. We've gotta see where it falls. Hopefully, it's gonna be on their private property, and that's be the case, then they'll maintain it along with the bank. But it's pretty close between their property line and the back of the layout, so... Like I said, they're planning to wrap this up in the end of September.
Okay.
And then, cross my fingers, make sure they get, everything's done well, and then we can hopefully look towards the spring of next year after it goes through winter for acceptance and be done with it. And I'll, what I'll do is I'll email this punch list out to the board that I have here so you can see it.
Thank you.
One last thing, and I'll reach out to Mr. Cook and, there's another gentleman, too. I think he's on the association, Jim?
Yeah, I can't remember their names. There's three people.
There's three people?
Joey, yeah. I can get their names for you if you want.
Yeah, that'd be good, and I can send it to them, and then they can spread the word out.
Okay, thank you, Rich. All right, next item on our agenda is Cranberry Heights Definitive Open Space Subdivision. So if you would be so kind, sir. Liver up your vocal cords if you're worried.
In accordance with the town of Norfolk zoning bylaws, the planning board rules and regulations in MGL Chapter 40A, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 25th, 2018, at 7:15 PM in Room 124 in the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, on the application of Bella Rosa Stables LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Cranberry Heights. Plans by Andrew Survey and Engineering Incorporated out of Uxbridge, Mass., dated July 2nd, 2018, located off Cranberry Meadow Road and Eagle Drive. The subdivision is proposed to have 22 lots. There are also applications for a stormwater management permit and an earth removal permit for which public hearings will be held concurrently. See Assessors Map 6, Block 1, Lots 5 and 7 in the R3 zoning district. The property is owned by William H. and Beverly J. Slattery, 110 Park Street, Norfolk, Mass.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
You're on.
Thank you very much. Good evening. On behalf of the applicant, my name is Steve O'Connell from Andrew Survey and Engineering. Here for a definitive subdivision application known as Cranberry Heights. Should look familiar to you, this subsequent to a special permit which this board issued for an open space preservation development not too long ago. So what we've submitted to you is a more detailed engineering plan, but identical from a lot layout and roadway layout standpoint. There was no deviations to speak of with regards to configuration. What you do see, as I mentioned, are detailed engineering plans, grading, stormwater road profiles, stormwater infrastructure, water and other, you know, associated utilities in the roadway. There are a handful or so waivers we've requested due to various, you know, unique site conditions, some of which are overlapping conversations from the special permit. Nonetheless, certain, we'll get into those, and we look forward to your input. But just for a brief summary, since this is a new public hearing, I will just kind of cover some of the basics. So the property is situated off of Cranberry Meadow Road, which comes off of Lawrence Street here on the bottom of the page, and also the end of Eagle Drive, which is part of a subdivision with Eagle Drive and Brett's Farm Road, also off Lawrence Street. So we're proposing to connect to the end of existing Eagle Drive here and come in a fashion like this. This will terminate in a cul-de-sac, and the intersection we're proposing for this road will come down and tie into a stub of a road that's actually off of Cranberry Meadow Road. There's no name there for this little stub road, but it was part of the Cranberry Meadow subdivision and constructed, and it literally stubs to about here.
Mm-hmm.
And that's within the layout of the Cranberry Meadow Road subdivision. So we will make that connection there. We're proposing onsite sewage disposal systems, of which soil testing has already been completed. And that soil testing was completed a number of years ago when this subdivision was previously approved but never constructed. All of the testing results are on file at the Board of Health. I know that that was a comment in Beta's review, and we'll supplement them with some of that information and perhaps a sheet that shows the test pit locations if it wasn't clear. So we expect that information to still be consistent since soil conditions have not changed onsite when those tests occurred. So in addition to onsite sewage disposal, we will service the project with municipal water. That water will be the result of an extension from Lawrence Street and...
Did you trace the path of the water main?
Yeah, so it's off the page, but you know, if we're off here, Lawrence Street is out here, it's gonna come up. And we're working in concert with a developer on Lawrence Street for a project that they have, and we'll be bringing the water in Eagle Drive and then into the project, servicing all of these lots, and we'll be providing a stub down here should it ever need to be extended. So all of the stormwater is handled through a single infiltration basin here. We performed some supplemental soil testing yesterday, witnessed by representative from Beta, and confirmed some of the technical aspects of things we needed to confirm, and we don't anticipate any changes to the basin based on the soil testing. So again, we're collecting stormwater in a series of catch basins and closed pipe networks which will convey stormwater. There's a low point in the road, a proposed road here, which is collected in catch basins. The stormwater is piped down to a manhole here, which carries water from a series of catch basins along this road and this road to a central collection point here, which discharges into this, you know, traditional-type stormwater basin where we'll promote infiltration to the groundwater and provide pre and post runoff mitigation components in accordance with the stormwater regulations and local regulations that are applicable. We've done our best to provide lot layout with houses and site grading, certainly presents, you know, I'm sorry, illustrates quite a bit of grading, as you can see. And, you know, we've kind of been through this exercise during the special permit process when we looked at various road grades to try to minimize earth removal, earth cuts. So we've kind of carried those forward into these detailed engineering plans, and then this is what we're proposing. So, you know, these lots, for example, will all be serviced by what we're calling Road B here, and then this road will climb and then level off at this intersection, and then Road A up here is, you know, fairly level and, you know, for all intents and purposes, a couple of ups and downs just for stormwater purposes and to meet subdivision regulations. But, well, we're fixed at Eagle Drive, and we're fixed at Cranberry Meadow Road. So this roadway configuration to minimize earthwork resulted in this layout, and as you may also remember, we're contending with mapped endangered species, so again, by satisfying the Natural Heritage and Species Dangerous Species Program, we're providing a significant amount of open space. More than half of the parcel area will be preserved perpetuity as open space. And, you know, as a result, we're working in this area and resulting in, you know, in creating three-to-one slopes, very manageable slopes, a lot of existing steep slopes on site that really just show up a little bit more prevalent now that we've got darker proposed contour lines. But there'll be a series of, you know, short walls around houses that there often are, you know, for walkouts and grade changes from drive foot from garages to first floors. So we've worked with the applicant on what he envisions for individual dwellings and how those kind of fit into the landscape, and it's evident here on the plans.
Steve, where that heavy grading is, I can't read the numbers, the plans are too small, is the existing grade changing much from that to the finished grade where the dark lines are?
No, no, it's not. It's just one of those scenarios where, you know, we're very close to existing grade up here, but when you offset the lines...
Yeah.
Because that three-to-one slope, you're offsetting two foot contours, six feet, so you get that three-to-one slope, and it just, it just looks terrible.
So the terrain isn't gonna change much from what it is before you start?
Exactly. So what makes it look so, kind of, you know, makes it stand out is that these proposed dark contour lines, they have to angle across these existing contour lines to tie in, but by and large, some of those, a lot of those existing slopes will remain.
And you leveling off the front of those lots for the foundation and for the out area?
A little bit.
Know what you're doing?
Yep, a little bit.
Is that the same at the bottom of the plan, too? You've got the heavy grading lines?
Yep, so...
That grade going down to the wetland area, that's similar?
Yep, exactly. Three-to-one slopes. Try to provide some somewhat of a level pad site for the dwellings, and then we just tie in the grades three-to-one. You know, this area right here is fill. There's a pretty good vertical relief that existing on the site right in this area now. So this is kind of a fill slope down to the top of the access road around the basin. But you're correct, John, that generally is just similar to existing grades, just a little more prevalent.
So again, I can't read because of the size, but where are the wall, the retaining wall is gonna be needed now?
Yeah, they're just on a lot-by-lot basis, so we show them in the back of these lots just to step down.
Are you filling the front of those lots to put the foundations in?
There'll be a little bit of fill in the front, yeah. So there'll be a wall generally behind the garages, so it kind of creates a natural walkout from the basement of these units and this unit and this unit.
Yeah, the reason I ask, because you're looking for a waiver from the masonry stone wall, and from my perspective, where these walls are not gonna be seen visually, I don't think there's any need to get expensive walls in there where they're gonna be just used as a backup behind somebody's house, so...
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Are some of those lines actually removed?
Yeah, well...
These lines here, because it's just, it seems like these contours move across and these lines are to be done.
Well, they're existing, so they always show up under the proposed for, you know, for reference purposes, but yeah.
When the initial discussions were going on, we were talking about cuts and fills and the grade of the road. Where is the steepest grade of the road at the moment?
Right here, right in this straightaway, which is what we try to do. We try to minimize the steepest slopes along horizontal curves, but so as you come out of this curve and you start to climb up straight, and then you go into this horizontal curve, it starts to soften, and then it levels out at this intersection.
Yeah.
Right in this straightaway.
Yeah. But I think we, the number I remember was in 8% grade.
8%, that's correct.
Okay.
Was that...
We just received the Beta comments, as you did as well, but I noticed that it says here at Lot 12, you've got a potential septic system issue, because septic system for Lot 12 is located in an area of rock outcrop?
Yeah, we'll address that. These septics were kind of conceptual, just in nature.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that that issue is addressed. I don't expect a problem.
Are you depole test where the septic systems are going, where you did it a while ago?
Yeah.
Are they gonna have to be redone?
I don't believe they'll be redone, but the permits may have to be extended with a fee, with a corresponding renewal fee.
I'm just saying the depole test has to be in the field of the septic, so if you don't have those test holes in the field, then you have to get new depole test.
If that's the case.
And the season's from, the season's from what, November till?
May.
May only, so...
December 15th to May 30th.
All right, yeah. But we have those locations, and if that is the case on a lot or two?
Just move it.
That's what we have to do, right?
Right.
So yes, Mr. Chairman, we did receive Beta's comments. We appreciate their ability to get those to us before the meeting. We went through them, you know, internally and with the client. You know, as far as I'm concerned, certainly deal breakers, I think might be some things we, that do require some input from the board and some comment from the board, but we're happy to go through them to the extent you'd like to. I'm sure you'd probably want to, you know, get some input from Phil and his perspective on some of these...
Yep, we do indeed. So Phil, you want to hit the highlights on this? There's four or five pages, but you can...
Just before that, Walter, excuse me. Where's the blasting gonna be going on this site? Because you're rebutting a neighborhood that has all private wells.
So the blasting is going to most likely be right through the biggest part of this cut right here as we come up, go up through this part of the road. And I know that that was one of Beta's comments, we're gonna quantify that rock.
Right, okay. You don't think there's any other blasting where you're rebutting the other neighborhood? Hard to say?
Yeah, we'll investigate that and let you know.
That'd be great if you could. They did that across the way, too. They did a preliminary pre-blast survey.
Yeah.
Just go out and dig some holes and knowing what your elevations are gonna be, see if you can find any spots where there may be a need to blast also, just so we know before you get started.
Yep.
Again, because you're rebutting private wells, you may find when this whole water line gets connected, we had talked about before, I know that the last thing you probably want to do, but looping that water down Cranberry back to Lawrence, you're probably gonna find that coming up that steep pitch, because you guys have to make sure that a test for fire has it, and you can't do that until the line's up. But I know that grade is pretty steep, so when you're coming up Lawrence and going around Eagle and going and getting in Cranberry, you might find that... you might find that you're going to have to take that, or the board may want you to take that water line and reconnect it down Cranberry Meadow, so you've got a full loop there. So you've got pressure and that may be helping you because of the elevation changes, you know?
Yeah.
Something you really should, I think we mentioned that at the, or I mentioned it at the special permit hearing. It just looks like with all that line going all uphill and then just deadheading, it looks like a potential problem. So I think that we're going to have a brand new lineup, Lawrence Strait continuing on, I think that might be something you should think of.
Yeah, we've certainly talked about it. It's something that.
I know you don't want to, I know.
Well, it's something that the project of this size is tough to absorb. And Cranberry Meadow presents a number of challenges if you just have to drive through there once to see that it's all rock.
Right. And the hills are pretty extensive.
Yeah, so it's something that we would like to avoid if possible. And, you know, maybe there's some other things we could do in lieu of, but environmental.
It could get to a point, Steve, if you're, if the fire department pressure doesn't work, rather than building a pump station, you may find it worth your while to connect the water, less of two evils.
Sure.
So again, that's something for down the road.
Yeah, we've got the quote that Betsy forwarded to us from Environmental Partners. We have to check for the deposit for their review fee. We'll leave with you tonight. So I'll be interested to see the outcome of their analysis too.
Okay, great.
How was the open space access just to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, yep. So there's a trailhead essentially here, and that's the primary access. But it does a but, I'm not going to say it butts other open space, but this is open space along this basin area here too. So the trail, there's also a trailhead here, but it also serves as the maintenance access down to the road around the basin. So two points of access. And then I'm not sure how usable or, it'll be usable if people choose to, but there's a connectivity of open space here with a connection up through here that goes all the way around.
Okay.
So three, three entry points into the open space.
What are the soils up here, Phil?
So the soils are A and B soils. Canton fine sandy loam and Hinckley loamy sand.
Did you guys look at a low-impact drainage system?
A little bit. Due to the disturbances that were already on the site, just from some prior earth removal activities and in conjunction with some of the steep topography coming down this eight percent road, having a basin right in this low point where a lot of the excavation took place just made sense.
I understand.
Okay, before we get to Phil, any other questions here, members of the board? Okay, Phil, you want to hit the high spots quickly on your?
Okay, so there are seven waivers requested. And we generally don't have an issue with those. It seems reasonable for this type of project. I do think that we would need to add W-10, which is that the open space preservation plan was shown with a 50-foot right-of-way and a 24-foot wide road, which is consistent with a residential street, as opposed to what would be, this would be classified as a secondary street because of the number of houses. But because of the configuration of the roads and the likely, you know, division of traffic, it would be reasonable to.
Are these 50-foot right-of-ways?
Yes.
Well, do they have the 10-foot easement in the back of one of these on the right-of-way just for the utility areas?
So they have five-foot utility easements on both sides.
Yeah, both sides.
All right, so you read the regulation then?
Yeah.
All right. We get stuck on having no place to put the street trees when they're putting the lines in, and a 50-foot right-of-way, it does leave room for the utility bed.
I love the idea. We do it on subdivisions where that's not a requirement, makes a lot of sense.
Right.
I think to Phil's point, not to interrupt, but if that, if we do agree that that waiver makes sense, that'll supersede the waiver where we ask for the centerline radius coming on Eagle Drive, because that would actually comply with a residential street versus a secondary.
Yep. So there's a number of just, you know, housekeeping clean things. But I did want to talk about I-2, I-1 on page three. The retaining walls, there are, the plan shows retaining walls in various locations. One is right off the access from Cranberry Lane. There's a one on each side, it looks like.
Yep.
So we just wanted some more detail for those. There's also, it looks like two or three along the back wall on the riverfront area line.
Oh, yeah.
And some may be higher than four feet. So I think that we need some more clarification on that, just to know.
You get a certain height, then they require a fence, right?
Structural too.
For safety.
Yeah, they become a structure.
For safety reasons, yeah.
The visual, the visual height of a wall is limited to four feet unless you request a waiver.
That's correct.
So those, that's it, you know, there's some details. So the biggest challenge for this project, I think, is going to be the earthwork. And we had discussed during the open space plan process, the, you know, the bulb up at top, the cul-de-sac area, that was, that was able, because we're using an eight percent grade, was able to minimize that area. It's the excavation on lots 14 to 17 that are new in this plan. And I have to disagree with Steve's statement about the fact that there is going to be a substantial change in topography there, particularly on the backside of Lot 16, there's about a 20-foot cut at the foot of that. And that's, I don't know, I think it's a 30 to 34-foot slope all the way up the top.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. What I meant was that the slope, the final slope is not too much different than the existing slope, but I agree there's a cut there.
Right, right. So we would, we're just going to make sure that, you know, A, there's not an issue with ledge, you're not intercepting groundwater, and, you know, obviously protection of that slope. So we would recommend at a minimum, if there's no issue with water or ledge there, a minimum, you know, anything over 20-foot vertical, we would recommend a bench.
Sure.
At mid-slope, just to protect, you know, that slope a little bit better.
Usually like to see like an eight to 10-foot bench?
Yeah, yes.
Would you need a bench to maintain the three to one slope?
So you, obviously you don't want it to slough and a bench just protects, gives better protection for those houses below too.
Halfway down that slope, we'd buy the harness to bench.
It makes it for a killer jump when you're on snow.
Sweating, yeah.
Sorry.
Agreed.
So, and it's a substantial amount. I think the permit indicated that there was upwards of 62,000 cubic feet of sand and gravel removed from the site. And that doesn't, I'm assuming, I don't know if it took into swell and/or, you know, what percentage of that is going to actually be rock. So the numbers could be substantial in terms of truckloads from the site. And so we would, I think we need to work with, figure out the schedule, you know, the residents are going to be significantly impacted either on Eagle or Cranberry Meadow. And so I think, you know, I think there's got to be a little bit more discussion and how we're going to manage that.
Sure. Yeah, but we'd like the board's input on that because it's something that can be more disruptive for a shorter time period, or it can be less disruptive for a longer time period. And what would be, I, you know, what would be preferred?
The issue is they have a potential 50,000 truckloads from across the street that are going to be coming down at the same time.
Right.
Which is, when you had just, you started off at what, 130,000 yards, you get it down to 60, is that how we had worked it by?
Yeah.
Over the sidewalk, was that it?
Yeah, we were over 150.
I think it was, I think that we just focused on that upper time and it went from like 40 to 20, if I remember correctly, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't, so it did encompass the whole site.
The first plan we had was like 130 or 40,000 yards.
I thought he cut it in half.
And I know they're changing the grades, we got it down to maybe 50 or 60.
60-ish, yep.
Right, right.
You've got to better memory than I do.
I'm over.
So, yeah, I think there's got to be more discussion about utilities, obviously with the review of the water line and, yeah, and we, you're a little bit at risk if you don't have the, like, the soil tests right on the, you know, the septic systems.
Yep.
But that's, that'll be your risk. Stormwater, there's a number, again, just some technical things that we would, we can work through offline here. And then, so we did witness the soil test. The soil tests looked adequate for what was done. I think, I think what we would like to see is obviously the required infiltration systems for each of the homes, shown on the plans and in general form. And obviously, you know, I don't know if you have the building size confirmed, but a general, you know, detail for that.
Sure, yeah, we have that, we can provide.
For the placement of the foundations and this special permit all have to be in place before the plans are finalized.
Correct.
Don't the locations have to all be shown on the plan because it's an open space plan?
Not to my knowledge. I think, yeah, I think the final septic design plans will do that. We'll make sure we meet the setbacks, but we'll do our best to anticipate those locations for you.
How familiar are you, Rich, with our open space?
Valence.
Yeah. I thought that they wanted the placement of the footprint, just to know that, because there's an average setback requirement too, I believe, inside lot lines. Maybe mistaken, but.
I think it's there. I just think, I think it's intended to be more of a general, like, you know, illustrate it so you can kind of get a feel for the density, but we can double check.
So while he's looking that up, I'll continue. So SW 16 on page six, I don't believe that the town sweeps streets as frequently as would be necessary to obtain that TSS removal credit. So I think we need some other way to get that TSS removal.
Not a problem.
Again, because of the extensive amount of earthwork, I think a very flexible erosion control plan needs to be developed and even, you know, even phased as you do in your earthwork.
Yeah.
Just to, you know, I don't think what was shown on the plan is going to be sufficient. You know, maybe even, you know, intermediate barriers and sedimentation.
Slay up slope tables.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just to, just to make sure that, you know, you're not going to get it into the river or something. Yeah, and I think the operation, the maintenance access to the basin needs to be coordinated with your landscape plan, just to work. I know you do an extensive, extensive clearing of the whole parcel. You do show the required street trees. There may be some intermediate trees you want to, you know, show. And also show areas where you're not going to clear that exist, you know.
Okay.
Streetlights, I think you're showing two streetlights, one at the intersection of the two roads and then one at the detention basin where the trailhead is. I didn't know if the board saw that. I think that's enough or?
I think DPW regulates that normally. It's at the, an intersection end of a cul-de-sac and a major curve in the road, but they don't tell us where they want the streetlights, I believe. DPW will.
DPW?
Yep. And we, I don't think we necessarily agree to what DPW would suggest. I think what we, and we can talk offline about some, I think the, I think the fixture, the luminaire that is shown in the subdivision regs, I don't think that model is made anymore from the manufacturer, but whatever you're, whatever you're using.
I think you're right.
We'll specify, yep.
And then just wetlands, I noticed there's trails, we didn't walk the trail over there on the, is that the south side there, in the riverfront area?
Yeah, there's an existing path down there.
Yeah, so, and so just a path detail and then verification with conservation, make sure that then, you know, I don't know if you're going to need upgrades to that or, you know, and maybe, maybe the upgrades are within their purview as well.
Okay.
Just verify with them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Richard. So the building locations are, one, from an open space perspective, to make sure they're, how they're laid out, seeing existence and so forth, and how they're arranged in the open space. And then the secondary is to make sure that they meet the setbacks within the, within the open space bylaw, because there are specific setback requirements. So I think we actually, let me go back to what we just did on Norway Farms.
Yeah.
Let me, I'll circle back on what we, what we did in that one, because they did show building footprint locations and then, but we also had some flexibility in case sighting changed a little bit with site conditions for each lot.
I think it's something that's inching stone. I think they're.
No.
Plan and then down the road with actual construction building. If they have to move it for some reason, as long as it still complies with the open space rule, then it's fine.
Yeah, and you'd want to be just cognizant so you don't kick somebody else out, adjacent lot, by how you cited it too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Richard, as you said to me, we are also looking way down the road to the finishing parts here, street trees, spacing of street trees. Didn't we have a discussion about changing the 35-foot requirement to a different number?
Forty-five.
Yeah. Now, I don't know whether we've.
Haven't memorialized that change?
That's my point, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to.
This is complying with the.
It complies with the present?
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanted to entertain a waiver and.
Yeah, I also think we need to clean up our regs and get the.
The average canopy on these street trees is like 35 or 20 feet. So if you've got them every, every 35 feet, they're growing into each other, so.
Plow guys love that.
Right.
So, yeah, our landscape architect mentioned that too. He said, well, there's a lot of trees here.
Yeah, so, so I think in the.
So interim, yeah, you could entertain a waiver and.
Right, that's what we want to do, yeah. And then we got to clean up our act.
Right.
Thank you, Gary. All right, any questions from the board about what Gary has put forward? Questions from?
The only thing I will say, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, go.
On a couple of occasions, we cited the dependency on the water line being run for another development that's currently under review with another board. Is there a Plan B should that not line up properly as anticipated?
Good question.
Well, I think the burden would be on this applicant to bring that water, because otherwise they wouldn't be able to build. With an open space special permit, you're required to have water.
Right.
So they'd have approvals with conditions, I assume, and the conditions couldn't be met, so they couldn't do the project unless they brought the water. So it's, you know, they're hoping that there can be a collaborative effort, but I think your point is, you know, valid. But the burden would be on this applicant alone.
So.
Are you a special permit, are you, your, India is bringing the water line from Park Street to your subdivision?
In.
That's in your special permit?
It is, yep. Yep, it is. It's a condition in the special permit.
If you work with the other developer and you put that together jointly, that's up to you to.
Mutual benefit.
The first one in has to put the water and to get development.
Yep.
So that, and that's.
So in this, right, so in this case, in this instance, the board, you did approve it, the special permit with the condition, the water had to be extended up from Park Street, so.
with the condition the water had to be extended up from Park Street, so how that gets done is on.
The water line, Kevin, would have to be the size so that if anything else was going on the other side, the water line, the main line would have to be a size that could accommodate the extra houses across the way, so.
Okay.
Does the, does the water line start as soon as the bridge is in? Or they, when they replace the bridge, which is separate, I thought, than the other development?
Yes.
So the water line will go to the end of the bridge? Is that correct?
Water line goes to Park Street.
Right now, but, and when they replace the bridge, if neither development is in place yet, does the water line go over the bridge from Park Street?
Not sure. So it's not, and Rich can probably specify, I don't think the water line was part of the bid of the bridge replacement work.
There's, the water line replacement is in the bridge portion of the project, which is really a very short section of it.
Okay.
The, the rest of it, you know, from Park Street to the bridge and then from the bridge up through the causeway up Lawrence Street is not, the way the bid was bidded is water line by others. Now, there's a, so you, the board just approved this special permit a couple of months ago, so they'll be need, they'll have to coordinate. The bids are in tomorrow, so they'll be, have to have some coordination with the water line, which needs to be done. So we anticipated that kind of.
Well, more coordination, because once the water line gets put in Park Street, the street has to be reclaimed and repaved.
Right.
If the selectmen are still going to widen it, then that all has to be done in concert with the water line going up the street.
Yeah, I think it'd be beneficial to multiple parties if it can work together while causeway stuff and bridges being reconstructed to lay the proper sized pipe as they work their way up.
All right, having said that, that there's a, there's a water line up, up Lawrence Street, just to refresh, you're coming in off Lawrence Street through the existing subdivision.
Yep.
And then down there and up to this circle.
Yep, all the way through.
Take a left there.
Yep, and then.
Ending at a stub down here?
We're ending at a stub here. We will be looping it back up onto itself to provide, so some internal looping in case, you know, something were to happen in this main, water could be, but yeah, we're.
And as John said earlier, if the pressure issue is there, you may be required to come back to Lawrence Street, right?
Yeah, I think theoretically that could be, you know, like an engineering thing that we have to get into, but.
The problem is when they loop it within themselves, it really doesn't produce much benefit as far as pressure goes. You're just looping it within yourself. A true loop would be going back to the main line at Lawrence Street. But the water department consultants will give us that review right there, working on that, but they're the ones that know about this.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have reason to believe there'll be adequate pressure based on other work we've done in Norfolk due to hydraulic, hydraulic grade line from the tanks and the towers and, but yeah, we'll get some details of their review.
So this, this extra road does not come out anywhere near the bridge? It's not that close?
It's, well, it's closer than Eagle Drive, but it's funny because the length of Cranberry Meadow Road actually makes this extension up here longer than by going a little bit further up Lawrence and then in Eagle Drive. But since the other projects across the street would have to come up that far anyway for them, we bring it in Eagle Drive, you know, into this project.
We're going to continue this public hearing until next meeting.
It's, it's funny because a lot of things happen in construction and you often think that if timing was a little bit better, things could collaborate better. How many times have you seen a road get paved and then they, and then they looking to dig it up, you know, two years later to put a gas line in and say, man, why did they put that gas line in? This is that opportunity to get this water line in Lawrence as part of this project, so we're all be working for the, for the same common good to make that happen. So let's hope it does. So we're not digging up a newly constructed Lawrence Street to add water main.
Citizens get kind of upset about that.
Taxpayers, specifically, yeah.
All right, any further questions from the board? Any further questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
Hi.
Please take a, take a mic and turn it on and identify yourself.
Unless I'm further, I need a mic or whatever.
Well, it's not for you, sir, it's not for us here, it's for the people at home.
Can you hear me?
I guess so. Frank Riley, Cranberry Meadow Road, just two questions. Number one, construction time for the entire project from beginning to end, rough timeframe? Especially when I compare it to the other project, as we're calling it.
Two years, right?
Yeah, we think about two years. I mean, the approvals that this board will give will give, you know, timeframes, which are often extended, but I think reasonably in economic conditions were to remain, would be two years, maybe up to three, but certainly within the timeframes that this board would, would issue as part of their approval.
Two, maximum three years, roughly.
Yep.
Okay, and the second, and the second thing is how big are these houses, roughly square footage?
We expect these houses to be comparable to the houses in the adjoining neighborhoods of Cranberry Meadow and Eagle Drive and Brett's Farm, so twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred square feet. Okay.
Anyone else in the audience?
Lawrence Wilson, twenty-two Lawrence Street. I just, well, I didn't hear today was anything about groundwater flow direction, wear and wells, which you're fully aware of. We got the other thing coming in and that whole strip mining operation. We have this, and that's quite a load of carbon, feces, I don't know, in this concentrated area. Where's all this go? I mean, we have wells all around here. When it goes straight down, are we going into the aquifer? Have we done any studies there or do we? The question, have there been any studies as to where this stuff goes?
In terms of the septic, I believe we rely on the Board of Health to answer those questions, sir.
Have they answered them?
I do not believe they have at this point.
Well, would you give your approval without knowing that?
We would give our approval on the subdivision as it exists, as presented to us and rely on the Board of Health to make their own determination.
Yeah, so the Board of Health has forty-five days to provide comments to the planning board. If they do not receive comments within forty-five days, you know, the presumption is that they have no comments, but we certainly can solicit and inquire if they do. But I do think every board and department has their role and the collaboration of those departments and boards are, is important for a successful project. But it's not necessarily this board's purview to overstep their bounds or would it be the Board of Health to overstep yours? But from a stormwater management, earth removal, earthwork, general construction practices would all be under the purview of this board.
That's right.
You know, from a, there are a number of regulations on a local and state and federal level that are in place, and I think the presumption is that if those regulations and rules are met and followed, that those are put in, those, those standards that are, that are the basis for those regulations provide the environmental protections that, that are, become the standard, you know, which change from time to time. From a groundwater flow standpoint, I haven't done a hydro geological evaluation, but based on experience and overall knowledge, be very comfortable stating that the groundwater flow flows generally in this direction towards the Eagle Brook. So, you know, being, this being the high point, this being the high point of the property, flow will generally go to a stream or wetland or water body. So predominantly in the proposed work, limited work area, that groundwater flow is going to flow here towards Eagle, Eagle Brook.
So we're assuming.
I have not done a hydro, you know, geological analysis.
So you're assuming. Hey, by the way, the Board of Health, how do they know that they need to say anything about this? Are you communicating with the Board of Health? Do they know where we are in the process? Or is that another presumption that they'll just pick it up somehow and approve it? Excuse my ignorance, I don't know how, I've seen in the past where the boards don't seem to communicate.
Subdivision plans are submitted, they go to ten different agencies in Town Hall simultaneously. So by the time the planning board is here, set to start hearing, everybody in the different agencies, including Public Safety, have reviewed the plans and issued the planning board their comments. I believe, I'm just talking, we haven't heard from the water department yet and we haven't heard from the Board of Health yet.
Okay. So am I to understand that this planning board right now is satisfied with that answer as regards to water flow and those sort of health issues?
We normally don't have subdivisions of this size do a geological survey to determine where the water goes. Normally, we leave it at the compliance with the state stormwater standards and the local stormwater standards.
Okay.
Sorry, one other question. Would the new water lines that are being placed in this general area afford you the opportunity to tie into town water?
Town paying for it?
I don't know who pays for it.
In terms of the.
I'm just asking whether there will be opportunity for you to tie in.
I mean, I see what you're, what you're saying is, by the way, it's not going to be an issue with your well because you can tie into the town water.
I don't say it would be an issue, I just ask you if you could tie in, sir.
I don't know, what's the cost?
Is the line going down the street where you can tie in?
Yeah, I live on Lawrence Street.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, we don't know. We do know, by the way, there's a lot of rock where we live, coming up the hill on Lawrence Street, so there's some digging to do.
Thank you.
I'll just add a couple of points related to the Board of Health. So the, the Board of Health has their own, so septic system regulations that they're going to have to comply with when they get the septic system approved for each particular lot. Now, in order to, essentially what ends up happening is that if the board approves it, it's really conditional in a way, you got to have a sanitary system in order to get a building permit to build a house. So it's incumbent upon them, is the applicant, if they're planning to build a subdivision, they want to build homes, they're going to need to get to the Board of Health to make sure those systems are going to be permissible. Internally, we send it to the Board of Health and the discussions with the Board of Health agent for some feedback on the systems themselves. And that hasn't taken place yet, but we're, we are coordinating right now.
Well, actually, they have to comply with Title V regulations and where they're building four-bedroom houses on open space plan with twenty thousand foot lots. Title V requires ten thousand square feet per bedroom. So they're going to have to have a forty thousand foot area for the nitrogen loading for a four-bedroom septic system, so they will, after this process, be going to a separate process with the Board of Health to determine what area they can consider a nitrogen loading area so all of this extra flow goes into a proper spot that's unencumbered. If you listened to me at the beginning of the meeting, our purview is to make sure these lots work, which means they all have a prick test on them and a deep hole test checking groundwater, which they said they do, which is a requirement before we establish it as a buildable lot. So the Board of Health process on an open space plan is, is much more extensive because they've got that whole special permit filing for nitrogen loading.
But Rich, you can confirm the Board of Health has what they need from a process standpoint?
Yeah, all the plans have been submitted to the Board of Health and we have, Wade and myself need to communicate, which we'll be doing tomorrow. But we had, and like I said, the statutory, they do have forty-five days to report, but that doesn't mean that communication doesn't happen beyond that point, so, which there will be. So we'll have a better answer for the next continued meeting.
Thank you.
You have a question?
I do, thank you. Margaret Cahaly, eleven Cranberry Meadow Road. I am actually the very corner, right-hand bottom corner of this map is my property and very concerned and I thank the board for, you know, currently addressing the earth removal, this eight percent grade. I currently already have water flow issues at my house with the hill that comes down Cranberry Meadow off to the right and comes into my driveway. And now you've got this eight percent grade coming right at my house that very much concerns me. On another note, I know for a fact there is a freshwater spring that runs under ten Cranberry Meadow, which is the right of Cranberry Meadow or Cranberry Road extension. So that'd be the first house on the right-hand side of the new road, the existing house. It runs under their foundation and comes out in my backyard because I'm in a thing and it's all ledge on either side of my house and it comes out through the ledge. So I am super concerned about them blasting in that area in the earth removal for those four lots and hoping something can be investigated further in regards to that spring. And then on a minor note, I know you, it was mentioned tonight and the DPW is the one that determines that the last time we dealt with the plans for this, they wanted to put the street light on my front lawn and I've been living in darkness for thirty years now. I appreciate the fact that the builder wants to put it up on the area that he's currently building on and is far away from my house as it could possibly be, so. That was all for today, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? No, all right. Well, then I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to our next board meeting, which will be on August twenty-second. Ten, well, yeah, ten.
Does that work, does that work?
Well, we need to test that, just to make sure that everybody's comfortable with August twenty-second, which is on Wednesday. I know, I'm okay. John, you okay with that? Sir?
The time is open.
Good.
Okay.
Clarification, Mr. Chairman, okay to have direct correspondence with Beta, we'll copy Rich.
Oh, indeed, indeed, sure, absolutely.
Motion to continue the public hearing for Cranberry Heights until August twenty-second at seven P.M.
We are second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, folks, and see you in a month.
Thanks.
I think we do fourteen share and a half next, fourteen share and a half.
Oh, yeah.
Matt, you're up.
For our last meeting, I was going to remove the first concrete board.
Right.
So I had the sketch. Top one. They couldn't extend it any wider structurally with the foundation for the, structurally, they just didn't have the ground to do it. So that's what we're proposing at this point.
So in essence, what you've done is just eliminate the front one?
Eliminated the front one.
And you couldn't make it any longer either, huh?
Nope.
Okay.
That's.
All right, so for your, what did you lose, let me put it that way?
We lost, I think it was forty-three kilowatts and we lost covering, coverage over the front parking spaces, which we really wanted. But as far as the actual solar, it was the smallest part to lose, so.
Right, right.
Again, they wanted it over that for the handicap parking, all the parking, so easier accessibility in the building, but as far as the solar, it was the smallest part.
Yeah, understood.
What was the width in panels that was added to these two, do you know?
We didn't add them, we couldn't.
At all, nothing?
They could not, they could not change them. It would take it to a whole different class, which would have, that was pretty much maxing those panels out.
Got it.
And the length, we really couldn't go over here anymore, it's going to be over the roadway and over here, it's going to be over the roadway and that was pretty much, we tried to maximize what we had to begin with, so they, there wasn't cost feasible to make it go any larger.
It's funny, we had a different impression from the engineer who was with you last time around that you would be able to do something.
And they, they looked and know it and it wasn't, it wasn't.
Yeah, okay. What else do we need to know?
They just need to vote on, hold up. You held out this piece of the, this substantial change.
This is a minor modification.
Right, minor modification, right.
Right.
It did the other ones related to the, the. It did the other ones related to the site itself, but we were waiting on this piece.
To see what he came back with.
Yeah, I'm blessing on that.
All right. So, entertain a motion to accept this minor modification?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Get us a vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Good meeting with the advisory board?
He's still standing.
Very good. Thank you.
We're going to pass over the two Fern Ridge items and move to Seven Hill Street Site Plan Review, and the endorsement can come after.
No, we've got 134 Main Street, site plan.
Oh, I beg your pardon. We do, indeed. I beg your pardon.
We do, indeed.
We do, indeed.
To open another public hearing?
We are, yes.
Man, I wonder why he didn't come?
He didn't come because he didn't want to see those solar panels.
He's at home pounding a table. Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass Geo Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws Section F11. A public hearing will be held on Wednesday, July 25, 2018, at 7:30 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass regarding a site plan application for property located at 134 Main Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, Odyssey Realty Trust of Norfolk, Mass, is proposing construction of a three-story commercial residential building with associated utilities, stormwater facilities, and parking areas as depicted on provided plans. The property is located in the B1 Core Zoning District, reference assessor's map 14, Block 56, Lot 39. The applicant is also requesting special permits to allow a build-to-line distance of more than 19 feet and to allow the modification of the existing restaurant drive-up window as specified in I-4B-2A and I-7A-1 of the Norfolk zoning bylaws. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the Office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dan Merrick with Merrick Engineering here on behalf of the applicant.
Excuse me. I'm not going to be able to see the front of that easy.
Okay. What's better?
Just somehow...
Sure.
I've also got it up on the screen, Chris. Is that better?
Maybe if you move that chair out of there, I just push the whole thing back. The chair, if we want...
You want it back further?
Yeah. I'll check that out just a minute, sir.
We'd like to see it, too.
With me tonight is Stella Purpous, the applicant, George Purpous, and Jackie Brusso from Aronian Architects. She will make a presentation after I talk about the site with respect to the architectural elements of the building that's proposed. The site is located at 134 Main Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with Dunkin' Donuts. It was built in 94. There was a drive-through modification in 2013. This is the existing condition. You have the existing Dunkin' Donuts building. You have an existing parking field here. There's a drive-through lane that comes around the parking, and then roots around the building and all the way around the front, and then out. The pickup window is here. The order menu board is back here. And there's some other parking back here. And the right side of the property is basically just green space. So, the applicant is proposing to redevelop this piece of property. It's just under an acre of land. It's located in the B1 zoning district, inner core. And what they are proposing to do is to add a second building. This would be a three-story mixed-use building. The upper two stories would be apartments, four two-bedroom apartments. Bottom floor would be commercial. Tenant's unknown at this point in time. It would be a separate building from the Dunkin' Donuts, but we would like to position it immediately adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts. That's one of the special permits that we're requesting is, you know, typically, these are positioned more forward on the site, but given that the Dunkin' Donuts is already here, it did not make sense, from our perspective, to push this building forward because it would obscure the Dunkin' Donuts, and it would make kind of access difficult for the Dunkin' Donuts itself. We... I'll explain this a little bit more, but we looked at this on the side here, potentially of having it down here, and we have some mature trees down there that we really would rather not lose. And we also... This is where our septic field is going. We have a septic system designed for 3,600 gallons per day. About a third of that is going to go for the Dunkin' Donuts. About a third of that is going to go for the apartments, and then the rest of it would be for the new retail. So, we kind of... We need all of that septic system, basically, to accommodate the proposed facility. As I mentioned, it's a three-story building. We have covered walkways left and right. We have a building overhang on the front, so the first floor is inset, about 10 feet, and the building overhangs, so it creates a covered walkway across the front of the building. Jackie will go through all of that in a minute. What we're proposing to do is to take the driveway and shift it down the hill a little bit. The existing driveway is sitting right in here. We would shift it down the hill about as far as we can get. We have some elevation constraints with respect to the septic system. The septic system has to be at a certain elevation, and we have to have a certain amount of cover over it, so trying to get access, you know, further down here or along here doesn't really work because of the way the septic system has to be positioned and the elevation it has to be at. So, we would come in, and you could, at that point, either go through a drive-through lane, which would basically be the same as it is currently, almost the same queuing as it is currently, or you could turn off and go to parking here. You could go... We have angled parking spaces across the front. And the only change with respect to the drive-through is to exit out onto Carlson Circle instead of circling across the front of the site and exiting out onto Main Street. There's been some discussion with town staff about this, and I'm sure there'll be some questions about that tonight. But, this was kind of a layout that we thought worked for the site, it provided appropriate circulation for the site and good access for the site. We have 44 parking spaces proposed. There are 41 required. Between the restaurant requires 21, the retail on the first floor requires 11, the residential requires 6, then you need two handicaps on top of that to get you to 41. We have 44 spaces proposed, so a little bit more than the bylaw requires. We meet all the dimensional setbacks, the coverage requirements, with the exception of the build-to line, which is basically a minimum-maximum setback for a structure, which is 6 to 19 feet. And our proposed structure setback is 47 and a half feet, which again is consistent with the Dunkin' Donuts. And that's why we looked at different iterations of this. We came to you last summer with a concept plan, and it was basically this. You know, this is...
That?
Pardon?
Where's the concept plan you came with us last summer?
I have it here.
You have the septic field in the middle?
No, I have it here. This is the plan we brought you last summer.
We said that we wanted to see it with it in the middle, I think was the way the direction was going, or at least a couple of people had said that.
We didn't see it in the middle also?
I don't think we ever saw a plan that had it.
You know, you're taking one thing that's in pre-zoning, Dunkin' Donuts, and now you're doubling, avoiding all the regulations for streetscape, pedestrian way, et cetera, parking in the front, so what you're doing is trying to make two rungs make a right. I think if you've got this building here, and I like the first step when we talked, it sounds like this is very different than when I talked when George was here. You're going to have a three-story building butting right up against a one-story building.
Okay.
I mean, just look at the optics there. When you had the thing separated with space, visually, it was much more pleasing. This thing is going to look like it's all cluttered in. That's my... Is that what you folks talked about it to be? All right, so we're on the same page then, but... I'm of the same opinion that I'm not really crazy about the location of the building. I recall Kevin's comment here where we wanted the septic field and the parking in the center and the building over to the right. And in terms of square footage, you've got the same square footage, it's just a matter of where you place the pieces. Secondly, I really object to the parking out front. I don't like that at all. And thirdly, you've got a drive-through there where you've got a parking lot, people walking through a drive-through driveway in order to get into the building. That's kind of a safety issue, so I'm...
We were going to tag these spaces for employee parking over here.
I'm sorry, I missed that, which ones?
We were going to tag these spaces over here for employee parking.
Employees of people, they can get whacked off by a car going through there, just like a customer can. I think you've got to go back to the drawing board. I did not sit in on the meeting that you fellows had there.
We were here last, I think it was July or August, and we, you know, we talked about this plan, and we went off, you know, based on...
We talked about parking on the sides of the building, not the front. That's right. That plan that you just showed didn't have parking in the front. We talked about a drive-through that had a substantially larger queue going around the outside of the new building, all the way around the back, so there would never be a car backed up on Main Street. This...
We have the same queue that's out there today, and we could, I mean, we could queue out through here.
The same queue that's out there today, to me, wouldn't be a positive for you, because many times you've got cars parked at Main Street in the street waiting to get in. That's... And you know that yourself, George. Right now, when things are busy, people are backed up on Main Street waiting to get in the driveway.
I think this new design that my brother did, he's not here tonight, but that he did in 2013 that Dan mentioned. He's in my phone.
Done. Done. When my brother redesigned, John, he's not here tonight, but when he redesigned this in 2013, it was a substantial improvement from the drive-through that I remember when I was little. It literally just went straight...
Through the parking lot.
Through the parking lot, and that was a nightmare. So, routing it around, you can stack how many cars? I mean, 12?
20 cars.
Yeah, 15, 20. I don't really think that we have that many issues on the street. We used to, when it was going straight through the parking lot, and that was just too congested, and wrapping that around was a solution. So, our idea of making the queue even larger around, I don't think that would even... That would be 30 cars, if I...
A larger queue is good, but I think that if you want to ask for a waiver for the B1 main zoning, which is streetscape and pedestrian way and setback and all that to be walkable downtown, this doesn't work because you've got two buildings that are substantially different. I mean, our architect member isn't here tonight, but I'm sure you'd hear from him, but, you know, I think the Dunkin' Donuts by itself and the building that's going to be... What's the... The new one going to be 40 feet high?
It's 34 feet.
34. Do you have a picture?
So, you guys asked for elevation comparison the last time we did come here?
Right, yeah.
These are the same thing.
What's the distance between the two buildings, between them?
It's about 15 feet.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That really just...
If we could present the architectural issues, at least so that we can get some feedback on the architecture of the proposed building irrespective of placement.
I'm Jackie Brusso with Aronian Associates. Visually, these are the same thing. They're just different colored brick. We want to talk about that separately, but this is the relationship of the existing Dunkin' Donuts building and the proposed. This would be your view right off Main Street. The Dunkin' Donuts building is going to get some different colors, so we're going to be painting it to kind of get the two buildings to match with each other and update it a little bit. It's approximately 15 feet apart, as you mentioned, but the actual roof height of the Dunkin' Donuts is pretty tall. I don't have the height mentioned here, but the height of the new building is 34 feet.
34 feet, yeah. And then, you're going to have 10 parking spots in front of both the buildings, so you'll pretty much be blocking the Dunkin' Donuts.
So, they, you know, they designed the third story, basically, to be, you know, a root story, so that it wouldn't appear to basically diminish the mass of that third story.
Is that the building there, the front elevation on the bottom, bottom left?
Yes.
I think that's very attractive. I think it's very... Extremely attractive. I just think that beside a one-story building now would just be, it'd stick right out. And with the cars all in front, you're just going to clutter that whole side with everything open over here.
The roof itself of the Dunkin' is pretty...
The height.
Yes. I mean, you can't just look at it as a one-story. It looks as if it's a lot higher.
Well, this is not just give, so you can see that the one-story building is really not much shorter than the three-story.
I know, it's semantics. I just think it looks way out of proportion. I certainly wouldn't waive a regulation to have that set up myself, although you've got other members of the board here, though, but you're looking to waive the basic B1 regulations here to put that in. And I like the building, I just don't like... I don't like the location. I like the parking between the buildings, the driveway going around the outside for the long queue. I don't like all the cars parked in front, and then the cars that are going to be parked in front, I guess there's not much connection with the drive-through egressing out.
So, let me ask you a question. Are you... I mean, if the building were pushed forward to comply with the build-to lines of 6 to 19 feet, it would bring the building down into this territory.
I'm not saying...
Wouldn't be able to bring a driveway across the front of it and around.
I'm not saying you have to comply with the whole 19-foot setback, but something in between and spaced with a farther distance between the buildings, that would look more attractive.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, and I think the farther distance... And get the parking between the buildings rather than all in the front. That's what we're getting away from. That was the whole intent of the zoning. And even moving the new building as far as you can to the right, giving you more space in between for your septic and your parking.
So, are, you know, does that still contemplate, you know, bringing a driveway across the front of that building, or just coming in and having basically your drive-through queue be just between the buildings? You can't really... It would be very difficult to access anywhere from here because of the grade issues involved. I mean, we're going to go back and look at options, so I'm just trying to solicit...
I think the point that John made is that the longer the queue you can make, the better you are.
Clearly. So, the longest queue would be to circulate a driveway in across the front of the building. You know, you basically... You almost leave the existing curb cut. You move the building forward and over, and you circulate in across the front of it. I just want to make sure that we come back here with that. You're not going to say, "I don't want a driveway in front of that building." So, I want to understand what, you know, what you think is desirable.
Rich, you perhaps were one of the advocates for bringing the building forward. Can you describe why you think that's a better solution?
Sure. Chairman, members of the board, we did meet with Dan, and I know George, you weren't there, John was there last week. And one of the things we kind of talked about is moving the building to the street for the huge asset in Norfolk Center is that it's walkable, and we kind of want to build on the walkability. And bringing the building to the street, you can take advantage for people to be able to walk to the Dunkins in a much safer way than your new building, and it just sets off more of a walkable scale building. Now, we talked about coming off of that private way, which I know you mentioned that the grades will be tough because of the system, but even separating the buildings, even maybe looking at using the same curb cut on Main Street, and then you come into a parking lot and rework the drive-through lane. I mean, granted, your drive-through lane, you've moved it, it's better than it was before, but you have to admit, the radiuses are so tight through that drive-through lane that queuing cars in that drive-through lane, you don't maximize it because you've got tight races and all those currents. So, it's not as if you've got a long queue that you maximize distance that has a nice smooth queue line. So, I think you can really play with this design and achieve what you want to do. Put the parking in the middle. If the parking was in the middle, then you've got spaces to park... The people are closer proximity to the Dunkin' Donuts, then... And your employees, yeah, they're on the other side, but I mean, you... yeah, they're on the other side, but, I mean, you want to, the, the less restrictions that we could place on it with parking and arrangement and circulation and make kind of balance it between the, you know, when you arrive in the car and then you get out of the car, it's still safe to get to where you want to go on the site and pleasurable. I mean, this is definitely, I know you guys talked about, not talking about future plans, but if you go with those future plans, even more you want to have, you want, when stuff's going on here Thursday night, and then you want them walking to your store.
How many people are working at Dunkin' Donuts on one shift?
Like what time of day?
Not counting when you're not there, because you're not really there. The busy time.
All right, so we'll talk five to 10 a.m. We have, summer time's our busiest time of the year, so we're, we're ten. Weekends would be eleven, twelve.
There's, there's ten, there's ten employee parking spots just with Dunkin' Donuts.
So like a lot of.
Take the new one, take the new building, take the apartments, take all of those parking spots. What's the grade change between the, the side street and where the building is set? Five feet or so?
Here to here?
No, between, if you move that building down fifteen or twenty feet, what's the grade change to the side street there?
So the existing grade down there is it's about six feet?
Six feet. What's wrong with having a three-foot retaining wall coming off of that side street and have parking there for all of your employees? Get them out of the way, get them down by the street, have stairs walking up to get into the main area where your customers are going to be. And keep all the employee parking between that and the new building, and perhaps even the new tenants, keep them all down that are lining up there and getting rid of that grade that way, just something different.
So you are proposing kind of on-street parking or off-street parking here, where those cars would back out into the driveway?
I'm not proposing anything, I'm just suggesting, why don't you look at minimizing the grade change? You put a three-foot retaining wall in there, and on the bottom part of that wall, make the employees park there, far out of the way, and keep all of your closer parking for all of your customers, for them and for the new building. And then you're utilizing all that extra grade down there, and it's out of the way, and the employees will have plenty of places to park right along that side street. I mean, just something to, to spread the thing out, to make it look a little bit more.
Would the board entertain parking here that backed out directly into the private way?
I wouldn't have any problem with that.
It is the train, right? People go down that road for the train.
Correct.
We're doing multi-forty-feet projects right now, with the driveways all back out in the street if the cars aren't in the street. So, I don't know, get the feedback from everybody else, but at least that would take care of all of your extra cars that are going to be productive, and get them all farthest away as you can. And keep all the, the people that are going to be, because you're going to have all ten people now, or eleven people, and this new shop is going to have more. So you're going to have a lot of extra parking needs there, you know?
I mean, the, the good thing, too, about our crew that works here is we have a lot of young kids that are, compared to our other, like, stores in Foxborough, they walk to work, take the, like, they bike to work, as opposed to, you know, ten, twelve people that are taking ten cars.
That's why we want to make it walkable downtown.
But, yeah.
We're excited about the project, so just.
The building is beautiful, the building is absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, we want to make this work.
I wanted to set those, so that really shows off itself, and still somewhat, not the nine to nineteen-feet setback, but something that is more enticing for people, walking along the Main Street, you know, visiting the, the shopper that was going to be there.
So just to circle up the direction that we're kind of going right now, what we're saying as a group is that we prefer if we shifted over the new building further to the right.
Correct.
Correct? And based on Rich's comments, we also want to shift it down closer to the street. We want to include parking going directly onto the street, focus the drive-through queue to go between the two buildings.
We could.
No, not necessarily, we, we could still ask for the drive-through to go.
They could look at the drive-through and see if it would work on the outside of the building.
I'd rather have it wrapped around, just so we can stack more and more.
Right, right.
And that way, we don't have any issue.
Anyway, keep going, please.
So then the drive-through queue, in this case, would separate that off-street parking we're talking about and the new building?
Yes.
It would go along the entire outside, okay. And we'd have the majority of the parking between, set between the two buildings.
Now, what about the, the exit, onto, onto Carlson Circle? There was a lot of discussions, I, I don't know what, how it came out, but I know there was a lot of discussion about that. Where did you end up with that?
Well, we didn't end up anywhere with that. I mean, that really is driven on these parking spaces.
Because if that, if that egress was set back farther, you're less close to the intersection of Main Street, and make, I'm sure the chief would be more happy, make it safer.
Well, you'd have to move the window, set it back farther, which would mean a substantial renovation.
Right, okay, all right. On the other hand, if you, if you left it the way it's presently designed, you would not go out on the Carlson Circle, you'd eliminate those parking lots up front.
You'd do what you always do.
Do it, and that's, for me, that's a much more acceptable solution, because I do not like parking up front.
And then if you end up doing what your long-range plans, if it changed the drive-through, you, I know your brother says it's kind of tricky to do it out back, so, you know.
It's just, it's very challenging to do that, like Denham Street is very, our other store in Norfolk, that's just like a big plaza where the Gulf Gas Station is, super easy, because you come in, the window's in the back, and you shoot out.
Yeah, right.
To do that, it'd be, you'd be knocking down the store.
Yeah.
It just.
But if you can, if you can utilize existing drive-through lane, I mean.
We could make it wider.
If we're going to talk about that, we ought to talk about it, I mean, what, what do you have in mind for the future business?
Well, the idea behind that is, we would design this property, which is very similar to Islington Center. If you've ever seen, next to Islington Pizza, they just built, that, we're taking the same design concept there, and we would make our Dunkin', Dunkin' as a next-gen, the newer model, and we would pop, we would throw in a Baskin-Robbins combo location. We did have that many years ago. We just retrofitted a Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin-Robbins, and Foxborough. That's our vision. We would combine the two because of the walking distance at night. The kids, we're selling a lot of soft-serve ice cream right now, and we don't really have that much advertising for it, so we feel that putting in that basket again, but doing it the right way. Making it look really nice with a next-gen vision of the future, with like coffee on tap.
Sounds like a well-received install.
We'd want to do it right, so both complement one another.
But what would that do to the, to the layout that you're proposing here? That's the question I really want to get at. Would it substantially change what you have in mind for what you're presenting? In terms of further drive-through changes or window locations?
Drive-through wouldn't change. Drive-through wouldn't change, the interior of the store would have to be, like, next-gen is completely redesigned. It's like, everything in the store would be completely gutted, completely, front and back.
So you'd say, how many, how many windows would you have, just one or two?
That would be an interesting discussion to add a second.
Right, all right.
That's what most are leaning towards with next-gen due to the traffic.
It's what, two?
Ideally, you'd want two in a, in a high-volume Dunkin'.
Yeah.
It's too bad, because if that, if that egress could end up going out the side street, you could now have the front of Dunkin' Donuts, you could actually put your tables and umbrellas in the front there, which people would much rather sit rather than on the side by the parking lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind putting the tables out front, because that's, that's something we could do.
Be much better look.
Yeah. That's what we talked about, but, yes. Yeah, it would be, especially in the center of town.
Now, the front would be a, a seating area.
Yeah, the side currently, it gets used, but you know, I don't, I don't mind putting in the front with like pavers and similar how Den, Denham Street is and make it look nice, but that's fine.
And just for record, so we had that discussion last week, and what, the discussion was at the meeting. Phil hasn't done a review, because I really didn't want to have him get into a review with these kind of larger point issues to kind of work through first. So just for the record, for the board and the public.
We want to get the board's feedback.
Yeah.
If you go up with reasons why this just doesn't work, and I personally, I, you know, we're very happy to have you folks as a good business partner in town. We want to work with you whatever we can, but like to hopefully give comments to make it the best possible setup for your vote and for the town, so see what you can come up with.
We like the building design.
The building is.
Nice design.
Do we want to talk about anything specific?
Why don't you just go over the, the elevation with us while you're here, so I just start from a distance.
So this is, this is just the new building?
Yeah.
So as we mentioned, we have the overhang covered walkway here. We extended it out on the sides, the sides of the building also covered. We have a couple of different materials here, we have a beige, a flagstone, bluish tan, bluish-braish color, and the siding material here would be a gray. For the water table, we're proposing a brick to match with the Dunkin' Donuts that's currently there. In this board right here, we're showing the two buildings next to each other, so you can see that the materials complement each other, the style of building complements each other. The newer Dunkin' design, as George mentioned, has a blackish, like a charcoal gray-colored brick. So I wanted to get more feel for. Oh, this has a battery. Sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. So the, the newer image of Dunkin' has like a charcoal color, more gray tones, a darker grayish look. So we tried that to kind of see how it would tie in, and we wanted to get your feedback on the darker brick versus a standard red brick. That's the purpose of this one here. And. I do have samples.
We, we often defer those kind of inputs to our design review board.
Right.
And let that, uh, give us the final say on what colors that they prefer and whatnot. But we are interested in hearing what you have to say, so.
So these are the samples, if you guys want to pass them around. We're proposing a fiber-cement board lap siding for the first floor and third floor, horizontal siding, and we're proposing a vinyl shake siding for the blue and tan areas, a certainty, it's like a thick
Sounds nice.
polymer.
So the top one, the top design that you see right there, not the brick, the one above that is, complements the interior of the new next-gen design, which I would be more comfortable with doing, just because it, you want the outside to complement the inside, not just be like, there's red outside, but where's the red inside?
The whole world is turning everything gray, every customer I deal with now wants gray everywhere, it's all gray, earnings gray. Greg Gabiano's house has got nine rooms all different shades of gray. And they had gray vanities, and we got a, we got a win-win.
So.
True story, Fred.
On the, on the middle one there with the black, black brick across the bottom, on, on the Dunkin' Donuts building, aside from the change to, to the black brick, what other things are changing on the, on the?
So this is the whole Dunkin' Donuts building here. So most of the building is brick, so if we do the, the darker color, all of this brick would be the darker color. But where we have today is like beige and tan colors would go to a traditional white and gray. And then the Gable entrance with, where their sign is, is a tan with a white backer sign.
That's nice. And that would all be done at the same time that you're putting this new building up?
Yes.
It would be closed for probably two to four weeks, we try to do, next-gen takes about two weeks, three weeks. It's a newer thing at this point, everyone's going to be doing it in 2019. But we want to do it at the same time, because we have to build the septic, septic probably done first, and then you would do the next-gen.
Now, when you talk about next-gen, are you at the same time talking about the Baskin-Robbins change, or is that a second one down the road? Same time, yeah, okay, okay.
To minimize downtown.
Yep, understood. Well, that means that any extra little changes to the building, in terms of an additional window or whatever, have to be presented to the board if you're going to do it all at once, well, full. Yeah, okay.
We would try to stay with the one, but, I mean, we, we do well with one window right now, we would prefer two, but then with the second one, you would have to, you know, move the walking cooler out, we're going to, we would need a bigger walk-in cooler, walk-in freezer, because you were, you know, you were considering those ice creams and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah, they're yelling at you, you're not using the mic right, yeah.
We, we would need like a, a bigger walk-in cooler, walk-in freezer, the next-gen requires a lot of, you know, none of the tile on the store is there. None of the wallpapers there. It's, it's completely a, down to the studs inside, like it's a total redesign, it doesn't look like anything you've ever seen. It'd be super modern and, and fit the town well. We would ideally want, like to put a second window, but we would have to see if that's feasible, given where the oven is, you know, and whatnot.
Right, okay, understood.
That'd be okay with one window.
Yep. Well, one or two, whichever, if you go to two, please bring it back here.
I also brought this, this is a different color, but this is the actual material of the vinyl.
That's the certainty product?
Yeah.
It's what's on Town Hall here.
Gotcha.
Vinyl shakes, yeah.
Yep, and on my house, too.
Is there anything else in the building, or?
Any other questions of, of the architect here, of the building design?
Do you have an idea of what the, so the first-floor retail is, how many units? How many separate?
Well, it's open right now, we haven't really chopped it up, so they don't know who might come along. You know, they would love to get, you know, a small kind of a restaurant, sandwich shop kind of a thing in there, but they don't, they don't have anyone in mind presently. So it's just open retail space at the moment. So we've designed the septic system basically to provide as much flow of combination as we can for that, that retail use, because we don't know exactly what it's going to be.
The ADA compliance, is that just the handicap lift, the elevator?
Uh, yes, there's an elevator for the second and third floor apartments and the stairs. We did double-check the code, that one means egress is acceptable.
Anything else, folks? Well, thank you, Dan. We'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until next meeting.
So, the next meeting's not going to be long enough for us. You know, we're talking about a back-to-scratch kind of a thing here, so, and I'm on vacation for the next couple of weeks. So, do you have a meeting in September?
We do, probably at the end of September, much as we do at the end of August.
So that would be the meeting, I think we would ask for a continuance, too.
Fair enough. So someone want to make that motion?
We need a date for it, if that.
September twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, let me take a look here.
Oddly enough, I will be at the Dunkin' Donuts Global Conference. Pretty sure you will be as well. Understood. So I will be out of town.
How about, how about the nineteenth?
Yom Kippur.
I'm sorry?
Yom Kippur. Can we be open?
Okay, well, nineteenth doesn't work, the twenty-sixth doesn't work. Could we do a Thursday, twenty-seventh? What does that do to people?
Gets pets in there.
Gets pets in there.
So the twenty-seventh?
No, still gone.
Oh, you're the, going that week, probably?
Whole week?
Sunday to Thursday.
Twentieth.
Was that still the holiday?
One Thursday before, on the twentieth?
Twentieth worked for anybody?
We could do the nineteenth, I just was commenting on that being Yom Kippur, if anybody has any conflicts like that.
Thought you did.
No. Merely making just a comment.
Nineteenth is good with me.
Good. Nineteenth is.
Maybe it's seven-thirty? Time, like, for the meeting?
What's open, say again?
It's open, wide open right now.
Wide open when you go, when meeting ends.
Seven o'clock, great.
He'll go first.
So, we need a motion for September nineteenth, right?
I move that we continue the public hearing for 134 Main Street to September nineteenth at 7:00 P.M.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We get paid just as much for our racing. Is that pretty much what you guys are looking for?
Yeah. It's almost verbatim. Yes. Okay, run the same way, man.
Tables in the front would be beautiful.
Oh, yeah, tables would be awesome.
Ice cream?
Yeah.
You know how long it's been people have been asking for an ice cream store in the center of town? All time.
One may be going in-
Really cool, the design that they have laid out, too, for this new stuff they're doing.
We could have one going in that new building on Union Street.
Really? Okay.
Two's all right.
Yeah, two's all right, that's right.
We talked about the one side.
Yeah. Okay, so what have we got left here, Seven Hill Street?
Just endorse, right?
I think so, just an endorsement, isn't it?
Yes, I had the plan, yep, and so for Front Ridge-
Thank you, Phil, have a good one.
Front Ridge, just continue action until next meeting?
Do we need a motion to do so?
No, we are, we've already closed the public hearing.
Yeah, I was more talking about the bond reduction, actually, so.
But that's, with that, we don't need a hearing.
No, you don't need a motion. No, you don't need a motion.
We'll just put it down there.
All right.
Town Center grant update, do you want to give us a hit on that?
Sure. We're putting together an application to submit tomorrow for one of the final phases of the Norfolk Town Center Stormwater District, which would take the North Side Interceptor and then the Main Street trunk line that goes through Old Town Hall to the Town Pond to evaluate Town Pond to be expanded to provide for additional impervious area to detain for stormwater for the center of town. So what would, the proposal would be, we needed, there was a model, there was a stormwater model that was done back in 2009 for the town, but at that time, it didn't take into account different impervious coverages and whether the system could handle that, so the, the plan would be run, run the mathematical calculations on the watershed, see what could be done, if it can be done to expand the system, and I think, we understand it can be, and what we need to do to expand the system, what stormwater improvements. We do know that the, the drain line on the, on the old Town Hall site is undersized, so we know that definitely needs to be upgraded to handle additional flow. We know the outfall is, is crushed right now, so that needs to be repaired, but Town Pond itself may need some additional improvements. There's a weird structure in there now. So the, the proposal was to, again, to apply for the money, would take care of the engineering side of thing, as well as the permitting, and then ultimately the construction.
So it's, it's, it's an all-encompassing grant?
It's an all-encompassing grant, correct.
It doesn't cover the construction?
No, it does cover the construction as well.
It does?
Yeah, so that's what we're shooting for. So again, the, the deadline is Friday, I'm going to submit it tomorrow. The anticipated schedule for announcing awards is September, and then you got to spend the money by the following June of 2019. But based on some discussions with the engineers, I think the construction side is probably not huge as far as the timeframe, probably two months, maybe three months.
Does the Main Street trunk line have to be expanded, too?
Not the Main Street truck, I don't think so. We'll have to take a look, but it's the lateral off the main line.
Correct.
But we are, again, we're going to go back, they'll take a look at that, they're going to need to do some, a lot of the timeframe will be the permitting and, and doing the, working on the design.
Right.
Doesn't Town Pond then flow into Man Pond?
It does.
So you've got to have to size Man Pond, too.
We're going to have to size the outlet weir so we don't affect the water levels going into Man Pond, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. The way, and if you recall, back in 2010, the town adopted that stormwater district.
Yep.
So this would tie into that. The grant that we're working on right now through the mass plan for production, we want to take a look at what we could do structurally as far as fees, so again, you know, if it's, we're allowing, you know, private property to flow into the town system, we need to have a user fee for the maintenance and operation of the system, so we're-
Which would, which would cover new tie-ins as well as existing tie-ins, right? Because there are a number of people that are already tied in.
Yeah, I got, yeah, yes, yes, there are people that are connected to it now, so we have to figure out how that, how that will all play out, but again-
We've got to get a new collection agency because they haven't imported much money on the town septic system, or nobody's been paying.
Okay.
That'll be a task number two.
Yeah, really.
But so optimistic as always, and I think we really have a, a strong case, you know, the town spent a lot of time and energy putting this together, so this is kind of the final piece of it.
Yep, yep.
And-
Long overdue.
Yeah, so we'll see how that goes.